Start meandering towards your seats down mid-range. Just say that for John. There you go, John. Just take it all out, man. So I, uh, yeah, I see we're definitely practicing, uh, what is that?
Social distancing.
Social distancing. Facial awareness. Spread out, everybody. All right. And I don't want to alarm everybody, but the council has these up here at our desk and so I hope it's not a really long meeting. But I didn't expect to have a blanket out here. I think it's trinket night. I think our, uh, I think our PR group's been up to something because we all did get our thousand-dollar bottles worth of hand sanitizer. So if anybody, uh, feels the need, I'll share some of mine with you. It's ten dollars a shot. All right, enough of that. My jokes aren't very funny, I know. All right, we got a full contingent of council tonight. Welcome home, Brian. Brian made a fact right before they closed the border. Yeah, look at him. There he goes. Darren, you might want to try some of that spacing.
Social distancing.
I tried.
I'm still trying to figure out what social media is. Forget about social distancing. All right, very good. All right, we do appreciate that you all are here tonight. Uh, we have a, uh, public hearing and then we'll have a work session. So the first thing I have the pleasure of doing, and that is reading the rules of order for public hearing for zoning matters, which is City Code Section 280-2. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request that the parcels of property which are the subject of the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendation shall be presented. The mayor and city council shall cause the director's written recommendation to be made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all ten minutes are not used, the proponents remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced, but may be extended by a majority vote, provided they are expended equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone, give their name and address to city clerk. Do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. First item under public hearing is Shamlee Town Center DCI 5520 Peachtree Road at All. As mayor and council, this is an application for a DCI with twenty-seven concurrent variances and two waivers located at various addresses along Broad Street, Urban Dale Drive, Egressall Rand, and Peachtree Road. Site in zone. Seven point three acres. In your packet, you have an application for a, uh, mixed-use development, which includes two hundred and eighty multifamily units and six lift work units. A mixture of commercial retail space, a multi-story parking garage, and a standalone four-story office building. Uh, to update you, and, and this is clear, made clear in your staff report, uh, we are now recommending this be reviewed as a two-phase project. Um, in meeting with staff and, and working with the developer, um, we had some comments about the mixed-use portion of the multifamily and felt there was, uh, efforts, came to an agreement with the developer that there are some changes that would be positive for the site, make it comply more with the Town Center FUD, the Town Center Master Plan. So tonight, we're only asking you to consider Phase One, which will be the office building and any associated variances, waivers with the office building. And Phase Two, we'll come back to you, we're hoping next month, um, will include everything else. That's the mixed-use component, the plaza, the parking structure. Uh, the variances related to this project, uh, variance twelve is to reduce the minimum floor-to-ceiling height along Peachtree Road to not provide a pedestrian entrance, um, from directly from Peachtree Road. Fifteen and sixteen are from the FUD booklet, and that has to do with building types along storefront street and Peachtree, and Peachtree Road. Uh, variance twenty-one is to allow both ground utilities between the building and the street. Uh, variance twenty-three to not, uh, provide interparcial connectivity to a recently, uh, rebuilt site. Uh, then there's variance for loading spaces, and then to allow projecting sign to exceed the maximum size allowed, allowed, allowed. Uh, we also have two waivers, um, a waiver for tree density, and then a waiver to not vary existing utilities on the site. So this application is for this four-story commercial brick-and-glass, uh, office building on, on Peachtree Road. The primary building entrance is on the east facade, so that would be directed towards the future parking structure. Uh, there is no door pro- proposed on Peachtree Road, which is why they've requested a variance. Um, office side view includes balconies with metal railings, and there is extensive plaza space and landscaping, uh, proposed around the building. They are constructing the rail trail segment that runs along Peachtree Road with the required pedestrian amenities. Uh, this, this office does comply with the recommendations of the Town Center Master Plan, also the Rail Trail Master Plan Phase Three Extension Study and the recently adopted Conference of Plan. Uh, Phase Two, as I said, will be coming back with those revised visions to better meet the FUD regulations. And you'll see in the conditions, we've recommended that, uh, you consider a staff condition that would require them to come back and get that Phase Two approval prior to issuing any building permits or, or latest service permits. I don't think that's going to be an issue, but just to make it clear that before any progress is made, that we have a full picture of what the entire site will look like. Here's the aerial photo. Again, you can see, um, combination of DDA property and Pierce Partnership property. Uh, this is the regulating plan from the downtown Shamlee Town Center FUD. Uh, you can see the property highlighted there in blue. Uh, that's in the mixed-use district, and the development and land uses do comply with this plan and zoning district. Here's the overall site plan. Again, we're focusing on that area in red this evening. Uh, we're only considering the office and any variances and waivers related to the construction of the office building. Uh, the applicant submitted elevations. Here you can see the, uh, west and south elevation, so the top elevation would be the one that would face Peachtree Road. Uh, the one at the bottom would face the rest of Des Michele property. Uh, this on the top would be the north elevation facing, um, towards the rear and the plaza, and then the east elevation. Uh, they've also submitted a rendering to give you a feel of what the office building will look like once constructed. And then there's staff, uh, photos, again, uh, a combination of developed and undeveloped property, um, located on those four streets. Staff does recommend approval of the DCI with the majority of the variances and waivers. Uh, however, we do recommend denial of the variance to, uh, not meet the minimum floor-to-ceiling height requirement, um, to not provide a pedestrian entrance directly on Peachtree Road, and to not vary all overhead utilities. Staff recommends withdrawal of the remaining variances and waivers. Uh, in terms of conditions, um, just to clarify and point out the previous condition that I mentioned, um, Condition Three requires them to come back with Phase Two prior to issuance of an LDP. Um, one concern that we did have at this point was perhaps not enough activation of the office building on Peachtree Road and the future plaza. So we do have a condition for your recommendation that would require those spaces to be activated with a restaurant or retail. And, um, and further clarifying that that shall be clearly delineated on Phase Two, so you can see how that works with the entire site. So when they come back for that major modification to this DCI and approved, then they'll reflect that retail commercial space in that segment. DRB did redo this, uh, application, and they had two recommended conditions. The memory's off there, apologize. Uh, Condition Six is related to retaining walls, and Condition Five, they wanted to see some more streetscaping along that internal drive. Uh, it's really just a driveway, so it's not a requirement, but DRB thought it would make it more pleasant, and so they have recommended that condition. That's all I have. Very good. Thank you, Matt. Johnny, anything left? Very good. And the, uh, air system are off just in time. It's okay, yeah. All right, very good. We'll have ten minutes. Excuse me. For those who wish to speak in favor, please come up to the microphone. Uh, give your name and address and/or relationship to the project and city clerk, please.
Great. Uh, my name is, uh, Bob Boils. Do I need my street address?
Yeah.
Okay, I live in 2606 Orchard Run in the city of Atlanta. Um, 30339. And I am, um, one of the principals of the Seven Elements Company, and I know this is, um, it's great to be with you all again tonight. Uh, and I, what I really want to do is give an introduction into what Matt's gone through and then be prepared to answer questions. I know you all are quite familiar with this, but for some of the folks in the audience, um, I wanted to remind everyone that in, on June twenty-sixth of two thousand and eighteen, we made a recommendation as, uh, as the city's, um, uh, the developer for the Downtown Development Authority, made a recommendation to the city for this downtown plan. If we can go to the next slide. Um, and that is the overall plan that was included in the recommendation. It was done by Bob Hughes, who grew up here in Shamlee, one of the foremost, uh, land planners in the southeast. And, um, and you can see incorporated in that plan, uh, are a lot of the elements that we're going to start seeing come to fruition here in the next couple of years. Go to the next slide. One of the things that was really important, um, was that we, one of the things that you all asked us to do was to do a market study of, um, the various elements that are, demand that might be included in this downtown district, not overall Shamlee, but in the downtown district. And what I wanted to do tonight was just draw your attention to, coming out of that study, which was conducted by Noel and, um, Associates, uh, they projected a need in the downtown district for six hundred and forty-four multifamily units, um, single-family, uh, detached property of about forty-seven units, homes of sixty condos for sale attached at forty units, a hundred and twenty key hotel, fifty-eight thousand square feet of restaurant and neighborhood retail, and finally ninety-eight thousand square feet of office. And what I've done is I've put a red circle around those items that are either happening or part of our, um, downtown, uh, rezoning application for the city center. So it's pretty exciting for us to see, um, us meeting that demand. Let's go to the next slide. We made five major recommendations, um, to, uh, the council and to the DDA, all of which you all are in the process of implementing, which is a, a real compliment to, um, the mayor, to the council, uh, to the DDA, and to, um, city staff. Um, you've implemented a new sub-area district, and we're one of the first zonings to come through that. Um, you have made, uh, the move to move our, your, um, city jail facility to a new, uh, facility over on Beaufort Highway, thus paving the way for a city hall, which is consistent with your plan. You've developed an infrastructure development plan. And then, your incentive plan that the DDA has implemented to encourage compatible development. We are, um, both we and Worthing Companies, who is our multifamily partner, um, are here because of that incentive plan. And finally, monitor the city financing objectives, so to mo- maximize the opportunity for success. I just think it's interesting, because when I went back and looked at these things about two weeks ago, I realized it's really happening, and that's exciting. That's exciting. All right, next slide. So here's what we're focused on tonight. Uh, in fact, Matt has already kind of gone through it, but that is the plan in the original, um, uh, plan that was submitted, and you'll notice that the Pierce family property, excuse me, uh, was not included in that, and because of, of Darren Collier and the good folks at Worthing, um, concluding their negotiations with the Pierce family, that is now part of the overall plan, which gives us a better result. Uh, let's go to the next slide. What you see up here now is part of our marketing plan for the project. Um, you'll see that the office building is sitting right in the middle of a series of all new, either new construction or adaptive reuse for new government facilities. And we think that's a, um, it, it will be a great compliment to the city. Finally, uh, two more slides. Uh, one is, or three more slides, Broad Street Market. One of the. Was taking the Indiana Antiques facade, um, and repurposing that as a, a seau through to a plaza space that is immediately behind that. And that is what's envisioned in that, uh, picture. Um, we obviously need a variance for the Broad Street Market sign, uh, if we put that in. And so, um, but it, it begins to create, um, some real exciting, uh, I hate to use the word synergy, but between, uh, what's going on across the street of the new city hall in our project. Um, next slide, uh, Matt has already shown you this, um, this image of the building, which is a, a throwback to what we would call mercantile, kind of an industrial look, but also with a very new, or very efficient office floor plate inside that building. And we, one of the things to address, uh, one of the variance requests is that, um, we are planning both on, along the, um, uh, in two different locations on our floors to provide grease traps and, uh, ability to convert space over to retail. We don't know whether we're going to lease it to retail at first, but, uh, and I think if the city had the opportunity to make a, um, hundred-thousand-foot lease with a good, uh, tenant that would be the member of the community, we'd want to make that lease and not have it hampered by that. But we are providing for it, and it will be in, it's in our construction budget. Last thing, uh, just this last image is a collage of different, uh, slides. Um, but you'll see, there's two images there of the lobby of our building. One of the things that we've been instructed by our, uh, brokerage team, which leased up Ponce City Market and Seventy-five Ponce, is that the building has to be authentic, um, which is, I think, a term that you all are very familiar with, and we are doing, um, our best to provide that. Uh, the total loft, um, this, we, we are actually calling this a loft office. Uh, it will have tall raised ceilings. Um, we have twenty-five thousand foot floor plates. For a thousand, which is a good number in this market. And then our onsite amenities that we're looking at, uh, providing would include, uh, co-working lobby space, full-service coffee kiosk, very similar to what you're seeing in a lot of these office buildings today, a high-tech conference center space, uh, bike storage room and showers, and then also direct access to all the project retail that's going to be surrounding us close to the public plaza behind the Indiana Antiques building. So that's a quick summary. Um, I don't have anything else to add at this point, but we'll be prepared, um, to answer any questions that the mayor, the council, or staff have for us. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else wish to come up to speak in favor? We've got about, uh, two and a half minutes left. Very good. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Very good. We'll move on. For those of you that are, uh, new to our procedure here, uh, if you look, if you have an agenda, you look further down once we get into the, uh, work session. This item will come up again if the council will have any questions from the staff, uh, and/or the applicant. We will discuss it at this time. So with that, we'll move on then to the second item under the public hearing, which is PZ 2020-579-580, which is Fifty-four Fifty Peachtree Boulevard Rezoning Chick-fil-A. I understand the applicant has asked for a, uh, a deferral?
Yes, correct.
So they ask for deferral till, uh, till next month's?
The original request is, was to defer two months, um, to May twenty-twenty. Would it be your discretion to defer for thirty days or sixty days? Or not defer?
No, well, I mean, if there's a, just a, uh, consent of the council, we'll just move this to the May work session. So without objection, we'll work that to the May work session. Two months. Is that right? Very good. I see. I had none come on for the Chick-fil-A people. That's always good. Okay, so, uh, that'll move, and we can take that off the agenda. I mean, uh, and we'll see y'all again in May, but you can stick around if you want. It gets real exciting from here on. The next item is PZ 2020-596, uh, which is Fifty-three Sixty-eight Peachtree Road Variances, which is the Blue Top Expansion. As mayor and council, this is a request for three variances of Fifty-three Sixty-eight Peachtree Road. Is that site in zone Village Commercial? Uh, it's a small lot. It's less than a tenth of an acre. Uh, in this case, the applicant is requesting, requesting to install a mobile trailer as a permanent accessory structure for the sale of food and alcohol. Uh, there are three variances required for this request. The first is to allow metal building. Um, second is to allow accessory structure that would not be subordinate to the primary structure. Um, and the third is to allow accessory structure to be located on the lot line. Uh, you, you likely recall that there, this, uh, property's been before you, uh, three times in the recent past. Um, in July, there were variances related to Spanish Moon, uh, which was a renovation of the existing building on the parcel that was attached to Eugenia's at the time. Um, the applicant. Wanted to put a mobile trailer in the front to serve food at the front of the lot. Uh, that was approved. And then in twenty-nineteen, plans changed. They decided to demolish the existing building, and so we had to get a variance approved to allow that mobile trailer to be the principal structure. Uh, this request is to allow a second mobile trailer. Uh, this one's two hundred and forty-eight square feet. It would be located more towards the back of the site, um, adjacent to a covered patio area. It would be a bar and serving area that would be accessible from the existing Blue Top restaurant. Uh, here's the site plan, or the aerial. Now, the site plan, that area circled in blue is Blue Top. That red is that narrow parcel. Um, then you can see the front. That's the, uh, mobile trailer that was previously approved, so that's where that would be located. And just to be clear, both of these would have to be converted to be permanent structures by code. Uh, so when I say mobile trailer, they're mobile now. They will become permanent. Uh, and then this yellow square is the location of the new trailer, which we. Here's the site plan showing, um, you can see the, uh, the smaller trailer. The one on the top is looking from the street, and the one on the bottom shows you both trailers looking from Blue Top, uh, existing one, uh, previously approved one in the front, and then the new one in the back. So site photo showing the property. Staff does recommend approval of the request, um, contingent upon the site plan. They've also recommended a condition that, once the trailers are placed, placed on the property, they need to be fully converted within ninety days. So I have. Thanks, Matt. Anything, John? Very good. All right. You got ten minutes for anyone who wish to come up to speak in favor?
Andy Lasky, twenty-sixty Peachtree Road. I own Blue Top, and, um, I'm just trying to see how much money I can give the city in fees for, for all these different revisions. But, uh, you know, ideally, we wanted to have a, um, you know, like a mezcal bar, and then the building was found not to be functional and safe. So we went to this plan, um, and now we're just asking for this provision to be, uh, the trailer, which is enclosed, which accomplishes a lot of the health requirements. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. So if anybody'd like to come up and just speak for about, you know, nine minutes, lawyers, anybody else in favor? All right, very good. Is there anybody in opposition? Very good. All right. We'll bring this up again under the work session, uh, as we will all the public hearing items. The next item under public hearings is, uh, PZ 2020-601, which is the Rosewood HOA Variances. It's a fence replacement. Yes, mayor and council, this is a request for two variances for our fence replacement at the Rosewood HOA. Uh, the property is owned in our one residential. Uh, the variances for the fence, there's two required. One, for the height, um, in this particular area, the fence can only be four feet. They're requesting six feet. Um, the second is to allow a fence to be, um, more than fifty percent transparent in the front yard. Uh, Rosewood subdivision is a forty-four lot subdivision. Uh, this particular property includes through lots, which are lots that have frontage on two streets. And I'll show you that on the map here shortly. Uh, so a lot of these eleven lots technically have two front yards. Uh, but there's an existing fence that is located on the property. It's six feet tall. If the fence is completely removed, it has to meet current code, um, it would have to be four feet. Uh, if they were just to repair it, it would not have to meet that requirement if they wish to fully remove it, all the posts, and reconstruct it. Uh, here's the site plan. You can see, um, the through lots are the yellow lots, so they have frontage on the cul-de-sac, and also along North Peachtree and North Schalkeford, uh, so they do have the front yard fence requirements on both frontages. That red area is the location of the existing fence and where the fence will be replaced. There's the standard detail. It's a standard wood privacy fence. The supports will face in, uh, to the property, which is required by code. Then some photos, a little bit hard to see. You can see on the right, the fence in the background. It is in disrepair. The proportion's falling. Uh, and then on a portion of the property, there's a, a nice existing hedge row that hides the fence from the street, and they do, like, they do plan to keep that hedge row. So staff does recommend approval of the request, um, that, that it be contingent upon the site plan, and that they keep or replace any vegetative screening that's currently in place. So I have. Very good. Thanks to you very much, Johnny. Thank you. All right, ten minutes. Anyone wish to speak in favor? Please come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Alicia Adams. Um, I'm the property manager for Rosewood HOA. Um, but yeah, pretty much our HOA fence is currently in disrepair, um, and it does face off the main street, um, for those two roads. But it also is a privacy backyard fence for these eleven homes. So ideally, they would like to keep it, um, the same fence that could be, uh, you know, to keep their privacy. And, um, but yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Very good. Anyone want to move on? Public hearing?
Second.
All right, very good. We have motion, second to exit the public hearing. All those in favor? That pass unanimously. All right, we'll do that. So now we will call and order the, uh, public hearing work session for March second, twenty-twenty. Uh, announcements, presentations, further.
Apologies, mayor. If it pleases the council, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Have an end of the agenda.
Very good. Is there a second? Very good. We have motion, second to spin rules to add on the agenda. All those in favor? That pass unanimously. Next.
I'd like to move to add the delay of penalty and interest for occupational tax to the agenda under city clerk as item number three.
Very good. We have motion, second to add the item of, say it again.
To delay a panel, the delay of penalty and interest for occupational tax to the agenda as item number three under city clerk.
Very good. Thank you. And we have a second to that. Is there any discussion? So motion, second then, uh, to add the item. All right, so we'll get to that when we get to that. Uh, so we'll go back then to where I was. We had Atlanta United Watch Party.
Thank you, mayor. Um, but fortunately, we have to, uh, let everyone know that this event has been canceled, um, due to multiple events, but they, at this time, they'll, they do not plan on playing the game, and we will not be having the, uh, watch party.
Well, yes, there's nothing to watch. So do we, do we need to take any action on the private? So it was a presentation.
No, actually, it was a presentation, yeah.
Very good. So, uh, now we have a presentation about the tree canopy study.
Hi, I'm Mike Edelson. I'm the, uh, GIS director. Uh, GIS director for InterDev. We're a, uh, I, IT GIS and, uh, cybersecurity firm here in the Atlanta area. Um, our headquarters are up in Roswell. I'm a neighbor. I live very close by off of Dresden and Brookhaven, so I'm very familiar with the area. But here to talk about the, uh, tree canopy study that we performed, the change detection between two thousand and nine and two thousand and seventeen. Uh, finished in, uh, late last year in December, and it's really a, um, it's a qualitative, I'm sorry, a quantitative study of the, the tree canopy, and not necessarily qualitative. So this is more, uh, we measured every square meter of the city as far as canopy or non-canopy. We didn't go into, um, the health of the trees or the, the age, but really just a, a qualitative, I'm sorry, I keep saying it, a quantitative, uh, study. So, uh, oh, I guess I can. So I'm gonna, the, I'll just kind of go really quickly over the results and then, uh, talk a little bit about the methodology, because the one thing, uh, the results are what they are. It's about a, uh, one and a half percent loss, but well within the margin of error. So, uh, ultimately, from two thousand and nine and two thousand and seventeen, I'll go a little bit into why we chose those different years. There was essentially no change in tree can, in tree canopy, uh, citywide. There was essentially no change in tree canopy, citywide. For the rest, for a big chunk of the presentation, the next couple of minutes, I'm gonna go over the methodology. Because really what I think is really important is not that you just know these numbers, but that you're confident in them. And that when, if I'm not in the room describing how we got them, and you are, to folks, you're confident in these numbers. So I do want to spend a little bit of time on how we got to these numbers. And then we can come back and do a little bit of interpretation of what we came up with. So the methodology really is acquiring a certain type of imagery. And I'll kind of get into that, but that's really important to compare apples to apples from one year to the next. Then we'll go ahead and analyze the imagery. We'll do an accuracy assessment, and that during that accuracy assessment is when we come up with the margin of error and confidence intervals. And then we'll do a year-over-year comparison. I'm gonna go pretty quickly through that whole thing here. What we're trying to measure really is, on the right-hand side is just an image I found on the web, but it's, you know, dogwood trees are taller. And we, and we really try to pull out shrubs or sometimes areas of, like high kudzu or English ivy come up as trees, and we'll try to pull those out. They're just very dense areas of vegetation that we sometimes show up as trees that we pull out. And that kind of gets pulled out during the accuracy assessment. The imagery that we use is developed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and it's called the NATE program. It's a free program. All you have to do is pay for the shipping of data. It's very large amounts of data, so they can't get it over the web. They literally ship it to you. So it's just a small fee for that. But it's really important that we use this information that's there. A couple of attributes of the, of the imagery, it is one meter, so we are measuring one meter. We're calling every meter in the city a canopy or non-canopy. It's collected during what's called leaf on season. So that's, most of your imagery, if you look at Google Maps or Bing Maps, it's taken during the winter. And that's because you typically want to see roads. You want to see houses. You want to see infrastructure. That's what you're looking for when you, when you go to look at. For here, we're looking at leaves. We're looking at trees. So we want it during leaf on season. The NATE program will capture that imagery during that leaf on season. And then they do every two or three-year cycles. And the last, the last attribute that's really important is it takes infrared imagery. And infrared really just allows vegetation to show up when you look at that. You can kind of see it in a way that really, that vegetation shows up very easily. One more thing about the imagery is that they, like I said, they try to, they're trying to, we try to recreate, you know, compare apples to apples. So you can kind of see right here, these two imagery that we can, that we use to compare your canopy was taken within eight years and about eight days of each other. So within eight days, it tries to be the exact day, the exact time of day. See the two red arrows? They're really pointing to the shadows. And you can kind of see, based on what those trees in that shadow, that this imagery was taken eight years apart, eight days, minus eight days, and within a few hours of each other. So we're really trying to get, and that's what the NATE image, that's why this NATE imagery is so important, or the imagery that you pick is so important. It doesn't have to be NATE. For, for this purpose and budget, we wanted to kind of keep it at a certain level. So we, this is the imagery we went for. But that is an important, very important part. Shadows can really cause havoc if it's a tree or not. So one thing we kind of look for. The next step is technically a very fancy term, ISO cluster unclassification, unsupervised classification. That's really the, in this day and age, machine learning is what this is. And we basically want to train this model. We will look at several hundred pixels, and we'll say, this is a tree. This is not a tree. And then we'll train the model, and it'll, and then it'll run, and it'll just, it'll fit in really pretty short amount of time. It'll give us your tree canopy. Now, it's not one hundred percent perfect. Actually, it's not even close to one hundred percent perfect yet. So, but that, so that's where the next step comes, is a quality control step. We'll break up the imagery. So we'll break up the city into quadrants or grid. And we'll go, and we'll just kind of look for major areas of just the wrong classification. In this example, I have a baseball field where there was these dark patches of grass that showed up in the outfield that were obviously not trees, but showed up trees in that model. We just identified those. We clip it out, clean it up, and we kind of, we go through the whole city. That's a pretty manual process that we go through the whole city. So this, this is probably one of the more bigger chunks of time. So that's, so we clean up the data, and then we do an accuracy assessment. Agriculture and food, for United Nations, agriculture and food, I forget the actual term. But it's a mapping accuracy and change detection. And really, what we're trying to do here is just kind of create something that's reproducible and defensible. And so we kind of, we go out and try to find the right document, and just kind of, you can go to, and I have it sourced. If you really wanted to kind of get a good night's sleep, the document to get you to go to sleep. But it, it really, that document allows us to kind of come up with confidence intervals, margin of errors, accuracy assessment. And what it really, next slide here. Really quickly, based on the several million square meters that the city has, we'll put into a sampling set. And it'll say, to get a good sample, to get ninety-five percent confidence, plus or minus, you need to go literally check X amount of points. And that's what this, this phase is, is going out. Not that we, not that you can go out and check the field, but we, different sources of imagery, we'll go ahead and check that, those sources. To kind of say, this, this, the model's telling us it's a tree. Is it really a tree? And we'll kind of go over several hundred points and figure out if it's a tree or not. Interpreting the results, so that is the methodology. I know I went through that really quick, but that, it's pretty important to understand and be confident in how we got the results. But ultimately, what we're saying is, and this is really for me, if you're a statistics person, you probably get this right away. But what we're saying is, in two thousand and nine, one thing actually going back, the reason why we picked two thousand and nine, two thousand and seventeen is because the NATE program back in two thousand and nine, they were applying imagery that was three square meters before two thousand and nine. And after two thousand and nine, they got a little more accurate. They got down to one square meter pixel sizes, if that makes sense. So to compare apples to apples, we went back to two thousand and nine. And it is a really good, you know, cross-section, a kind of setting a baseline of what your tree canopy really is. But what it's saying is ninety-five percent of the time, if you run the model the same way I ran it, you will get somewhere between one, plus or minus one point seven percent of thirty-seven. And two thousand and seventeen, if you ran this model, you know, a hundred times, ninety-five of those times, you would also get within that same margin of error. So that's, that's kind of what we're saying, the statistical, the statistical significance of the, of how we came up with this new number. And I think this might even be the last slide, but on the left-hand side, you can actually see where going, where the canopy was gained overall, and where were areas of loss. On the left-hand side, it's every meter. Sometimes it's really hard to see. Really interpret what you're seeing when you look at every square meter, if it gained canopy or lost canopy. So we really, on the right-hand side, we aggregated some of that area to kind of be a little bit easier to show where you, you really gained or lost. It looked, just a quick analysis shows there's some loss in the, in the southern kind of neighborhoods. But there was some major gains in some of the area just north of the runway, on the north side of the runway. There's kind of a little bit of open fields, or there's some major gain there. And actually, even in the, in the airport, which I, in the, in the report, we actually pulled out the airport. It's a very unique feature. We've done, for all the tree canopy studies we've done, we've never had an airport in the middle of the, of the city, so it's a really unique feature. And if you do try to, if you want to compare yourselves to other cities, it's really hard to do, because every city is just so different. That your, your, your baseline is going to be so different from your neighbors, that it's really hard to compare and say, we're, we have more than you. And because not every city has an airport in it, and a very industrial area, which I'm proud of. But that'll take, that'll kind of, you want to just kind of make sure that that's understood. And I think that's, that's really, overall, that's it. Just being kind of a math geek, I found a nineteen-sixties aerial picture of what Shandley looked like. And I would just kind of start comparing it. This is from the University of Georgia. They have a whole library of historical imagery. So I just added that just for, just for fun. But that's about it. That's the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, and let's go. I got, I got some math that you don't have to worry about AI taking over your job, does it?
Not yet.
But it's, but the model's getting smarter.
Yes, it is. It's getting smarter. We got a few more years ahead of us.
Okay, all right.
I want to introduce Bella Mackie.
Yeah, Karen's Mackie too.
She's a Mackie.
We like, we like your math. That was, that was great. Really appreciate that. That was really, really well done.
Any questions? I'm always there to answer.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. That was awesome.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to staff action items. We have City Clerk now. We have three items under the City Clerk. Because she's so special, she needed an extra item. First, we have the approval of the amendment from the City Council Work Session, February thirteenth. City Council Regular Meeting, February eighteen. And we have a discussion on the City Council Called Meeting of February nineteen. Good job, Emmy. As I say all the time, you did a great job, and the council just not even paying attention. All right, second item under City Clerk, we have the Alcohol Ordinance Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to ask for an update to the alcohol code. We've recently discovered that the state code has a provision that defines the term bowling center and authorizes the governing authority of municipalities and counties to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premise in any bowling center within the jurisdiction between the hours of twelve-thirty PM and twelve midnight on Sundays. So we are asking for you guys to consider this ordinance change and to move it to a first read starting Tuesday.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this item? Any objection to moving first read? Do you would please move that to first read? Thank you. And while we got your attention, Darren thought you needed more work tonight, so we asked that you talk to us about the occupational tax delay extension.
Sure. Thank you for adding this item to the agenda. In lieu of the coronavirus outbreak and.
What is that? I'm sure I missed something. I'm sorry.
And the press release issued by the City of Shandley this afternoon. We're asking that the council consider an extension on penalties and interest of thirty days, putting it to begin on June first of this year. And some of the access that we'll have for some of the business owners.
Very good. Is there any discussion? Darren, did you need action on this tonight, or can we wait until the same?
If we could have action on it tonight, that would be great. But if you feel the need to wait, then we'll respect that, but it would be great if we have action on it this evening.
I'd like to move to approve the request to delay the effective date for penalties and interest for occupational tax renewals until June first, twenty twenty.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this item? We have motion of second then to allow for the delay in the occupational tax and penalties, et cetera, as stated by Darren. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. So you can take that off the agenda now for Tuesday because you got action on it.
Thank you.
Some people think it'd take a little more time, so they don't just like cram into the lobby all at once and sneeze on each other. Okay, moving right along. City Manager, that would be you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a budget amendment to reflect the GMA lease agreement that you saw last month. The items for this agreement is essentially moving revenues from the capital lease and expenses related to vehicles, computer equipment, and other equipment for the vehicles.
Is there any discussion on this item? Standard card variety budget amendment. Thank you very much, City Manager. All right, next item is under Development Department. So we're back to the Shandley Town Center DCI, which is the five-twenty Peachtree Road at Hall. Does the council have any questions, discussion? Darren, if you'd like to grab your microphone, go.
I do. I guess it's more of a, but I'd like to ask if they consider asking the applicant to plant and move paying into the fund and potentially extending the range at which they plant trees. I just find our tree fund growing, and I think it'd be great if we had someone to put those, and I didn't know if y'all have a opinion on that. Certainly someone can look into it and see how to do it. And then the, I guess I should ask you as well, if you have any injection for that.
Hey, Bob, come up with a microphone for us, please, so we can all hear you. I said that I think you're on camera. I'm pretty sure one of those faces the other way, but I always get scared that they're all gonna like start spinning and take off or something.
Darren, I wanted to make sure I understood the suggestion. It was to add additional trees.
To allow you to plant off-site instead of paying for the plant, so those trees actually make their way into the ground. I know you've done some work as it relates to potential rail spur out there that might be inside, doing parts and things like that. So if an opportunity arrives, we don't want to force you to pay to put it in the ground.
I think we'd be open to that.
And then the second question was just if there was an access for the variance request to something to the orange, if it's a A P P on your ground foot running height.
That, the reason for that is the architects, if you trackside, who are architects, they, they just, that was the height they used for that building. And as the mayor and I had several rounds of discussion about this, we believe that eighteen-foot clear, I mean, that's. It does add a little bit of additional cost, you know, another three feet of height. So we would, that's why we're asking the variance.
Not three feet.
We're going seventeen-four to eighteen feet, right?
No, no, we're going seventeen-four to eighteen. That's correct. Yeah, so it's not, not really that much.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a minor, essentially.
Yeah, I was serious. Well, it's the way the architect, what is that? We got any more clarification? Hard, doesn't seem like much. So that's, that's all. Okay.
Okay.
Very cool. John, did you have something?
I did. I heard you say you were gonna put in the grease traps, but the second part of that is for a restaurant to go in is venting. And there would have to be some sort of venting that would, because, yeah, we've had to, we've run across that at a.
No, we'll certainly, we'll certainly provide for venting for the restaurant as well, if there's a restaurant, put it in, put it in.
Yeah, but I've always found it's harder to put it in retro. It's easier to have.
Well, you don't, you can install the chases, but you don't have to put in the full.
Correct. Correct.
I think that's what he's saying, John. They're, they're willing to put in the chases and the grease traps and have it ready to go. Okay, very good. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. All right. It's a very exciting project, by the way. The next item was Chick-fil-A. We had allowed them to, or y'all agreed to allow them to move that for two months. The Blue Top Expansion. Questions from the council? Karen?
I just have one question. You mentioned that they need to be, that these trailers need to be made permanent within ninety days. What does making them permanent look like? I don't understand what that entails.
Yeah, it'd be a building code issue. So they've actually submitted plans for the front trailer. And it's just making modifications to the trailer to permanently attach it to the site. An architect would have to design it, and then our co-reviewers would review it to make sure it meets the definition of a permanent structure. So we're just saying, once it's placed on the site, hopefully that permit's been issued at that time, and then give them ninety days to bring it into compliance with that permit.
Very good.
I will apologize for that, I guess.
Okay, yeah.
Seaside down Florida or Angovera over at Lumber Park, if you want to drive locally. Those are both permanent trailers.
I'd rather go Seaside.
Angovera's a good job on that one.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question. What is the canopy? I, this is for Andy. What is, is the canopy over the whole?
No, it's.
It's over the back some part of it?
It's over the back. Maybe twenty-five feet.
Oh, okay.
From, from the rear of the property coming forward.
And is that a?
What's it made of?
Fabric.
Isn't that what you have at Blue Top already as well? No? Okay, never mind. Yeah.
So on the, this canopy back here, I think that one of the concerns, I think, that was discussed was that, because I assume that there'd be maybe live music in that little area that's behind that. Is that, under that canopy, so they have some protection from the elements and. But I understand, and now that I see that there's canopy there, I think that will also have a sound dampening effect to keep the, kind of the music contained within. keep the, kind of the music contained within the area.
Yeah, and if, you know, it comes, if you've been there, you know, the bocce ball will now be covered.
Oh, okay.
Over that, and then to the, if you notice, that there's two different buildings there.
Right.
We only own the front building, um, but they have a common wall opposite. And so that's where it starts, right, at the break of the two buildings.
Other questions? Anybody, anybody? All right, thanks, Andy, appreciate it. All right, uh, the next item is the Rosewood H-Way variance for the fence replacement. Do we have a discussion of this item, any questions? Nope, everybody's good. All right, we're good with that. Uh, police department, big star chief. Parks and Recreation, we're good. F for Finance, nothing, Montez, all sorts of big stars. Public Works, that's still getting a star even though it's on the agenda, because everybody wants the roads resurfaced. The twenty-twenty road resurfacing plan brought to you by Public Works.
Good evening, mayor and council, as you mentioned, everyone wants their road resurfaced. I'll try to do this in a way that it does not dwarf the town center project. But, yeah, back in twenty-eighteen, uh, the Cap County came through the city and disturbed several of our roads in different areas of the city, uh, due to the twenty-twenty consent decree project. Uh, we just decided to suspend all of our paving operations and wait until the Cap County was done with the project, uh, before we began paving the roads again. It appears that they're on schedule, we're ready to re- to resume our paving now. Um, so we selected the roads for paving for the twenty-twenty resurfacing project to receive wide pavement condition assessment. And so we also have, chose the wor- worst roads in the city, and we tried to, uh, limit those roads to a particular area, uh, to reduce mobilization costs uh, for the, uh, bids for the resurfacing program. The bids turn, uh, returned a little bit lower than we expected. Hopefully, we'll be able to resurface more roads as a result. The market may change between the time that we receive our bids and the time that we begin paving, so we're not sure exactly how many more roads that we could, we'll be able to add into the, uh, project. However, the roads will be selected according to the severity, uh, of the road condition. Cost for the twenty-twenty resurfacing project is about three million dollars. The map that you have before you identifies the roads that are scheduled to be resurfaced, um, by the roads there and that go colored. Um, funds are currently available through our twenty-twenty capital improvement plan and our L-BIC funding that we received from GDOT. Um, requested action is that we ask council to approve the proposed bid, uh, to not exceed an amount of three million dollars for allied paving contractors, those.
Very good, thank you. Any other, uh, any questions? I think you managed to, uh, not overshadow the, uh, town center development.
I was successful.
Yeah, you were, okay.
Is there a map or a detail of the roads anywhere in the packet, I'm sorry, I missed.
Yes, yes.
There it is, I guess, I must have been confusing, I didn't see that.
It's not in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's not. Is it in the appendix?
Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Please, okay, great, thank you very much. All right, well, we're gonna stick with our public works and talk about Sexton Woods Pipeline Repair.
Yes, mayor, next we have a, uh, pretty significant project in the area of Sexton Woods Drive, goes down Hamlin Road and then under Keswick Drive. We recently discovered a stormwater pipeline that's collapsed, um, and it's in need of immediate repair. Typically, we refer this type of item to you, um, uh, after we were, we've received a bid, but due to the severity of the, uh, the conditions of the pipe, it's causing sinkholes in some yards of, uh, a few of our residents, and we're starting to see other sinkholes materialize. Um, this pipeline is a senior pipeline, however, it goes through a few of our private residents, private properties. So it will require us to obtain easements to go through the property to conduct the repairs. Uh, and we would also like to execute permanent construction easements while we're, we're going to work. Um, the project, we're anticipating the cost to come back approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred K. Um, again, this is a significant project, otherwise we would have waited for the citywide stormwater capital improvement program. But we're ready to go ahead and work with the project this time.
Great, thanks, Al, any questions for Al, Karen?
No, I just want to take a minute to, uh, mellow down for all this hard work and dedication on this. It was brought to my attention about six months ago when I raised it to Al, and I have heard nothing but great things about his follow-through communication diligence going through this process from homeowners that are impacted, or I should say, some of the homeowners are impacted, so I just want to recognize your efforts. Thank you for all you do.
Pretty good for a guy that wears boots and zippers. All right, anything else? Nobody else would like to, uh, kiss Al's ring? All right, very good. Next item, Shandly Donwitty Road and Beaufort Highway Stormwater Repair.
Okay, I think pretty much everyone is aware of this intersection, it's the intersection of Shandly Donwitty Road and Beaufort Highway. That road is in pretty bad condition, and it has been for quite a while. Uh, the road is in its current state because we have a drainage issue. Um, we'd like to put it in line with the rate, um, close to the area, closer to Beaufort Highway. Um, this is actually on the east side of Beaufort Highway there, the Jiffy Room. In order to, um, repair that road, we need to go ahead and do stormwater repairs first. Um, so we're asking for you to approve, um, the lowest bid, which is Georgia Development Partners, at an amount, at an amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um, we believe that will address all of our drainage issues. Funding is available in our current stormwater operating budget.
Very good, discussion on this item?
Could you go back to the map, please, that, that intersection? Okay, so you're not really gonna go very far down Schalfer Road or anything like that?
We are, that, that road is actually added into the twenty-twenty resurfacing program. Uh, so, the road repairs that, uh, will be attached to this project would be basically because we'll have to do a utility cutting the road, and we'll go probably about half the distance in between Beaufort Highway and Schalfer Road.
Okay.
So.
Schalfer Road was repaid in the last five years, I believe. And, Leslie, can you speak into my mic? Schalfer Road, Road was repaid in the last five years, I believe, and it, it has the washboard, the washboards come back, what? So, so resurfacing is not necessarily going to correct the underlying problem?
Well, we'll have a G O check then, uh, if that's the case, and just to see if there's any issues below the road surface that we need to be aware of.
Okay.
We did not pave that portion of the road that we're talking about, so this area of the road was not included in that, um, paving.
Okay.
Other discussions? All right, seriously, Al, great job, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, economic development, we have the downtown development authority appointment.
Yes, mayor and council, um, as you remember in the last meeting, you appointed Dave Carr, the current chair of the DDA, as we just would judge, so he has to resign from the DDA, leaving, uh, the chair position open, the board will vote on, uh, officers at the March meeting, uh, but to fill the, uh, open spot that's on the DDA right now, the staff is recommending the appointment of Andy Tan, owner of Pop Sticks, to the board.
Any discussion of this item? Very good, all right, thank you very much. Next item, the economic development, we have a U R A annual report.
We did this last year, it's a requirement by E C A and, and the resolution that created the U R A to have a report presented to the council before April of every year. Um, so this one just gives, um, you'll see an attachment, a rundown of the activities that happened. Uh, it was a little bit more lively than the first year where we didn't have any activity. This year we had three meetings, um, and of course, we issued the bond for the public safety building. So you'll see the financials attached to the annual report, and that will be posted on website, our website too as well, so the public can see that.
Very good, thank you, any discussion on this item? All right, moving right along, we have the crawfish festival proposal.
This is, yeah, the official name is the Mudbug, and we said festival proposal. Humulus Radio, which has been a partner with us at different events, um, they run their own event, their own private event. They do the Mudbug Festival in the Atlanta area twice every spring. This year, there's, um, as now, they're still hosting in Duluth in March, and then, um, they're looking for a second location for April twenty-fifth. Um, and this would kind of be a full return key event, they're not, this is not something that staff is gonna have to work at, although our events coordinator, Brittany would be present, um, but they would be handling everything, sanitation, everything like that, so it's not an equivalent of that, where we usually sponsor events. Um, and the footprint would be basically around the area where Case of Shandly is, maybe slightly smaller. Humulus is very familiar with it, because they do help us out during Case of Shandly. Um, they'll have a giant truck that has crawfish, they're gonna have a few other food vendors for folks that don't necessarily like mudbugs, um, and then there'll be a music stage too, which will kind of be the main highlight. As you can see there, it's, it's fifty-dollar tickets to kind of get in the door. They also have V I P tickets for all you can eat, if that's your thing. Um, and it's a family-friendly event. The other thing to note is that they do have a, um, I believe it's a vodka sponsor, so they do want to have liquor there, so that would be something that you would all have to approve. Sometimes they should have either that, it would also be through, uh, the sale of what you're, you're discussing.
Very good, questions, question? What about security? So sanitation, you know, usually what we do as well is, um, so we do a lot with that, but, you know, our folks in public works take care of sanitation and our great officers provide security. That's something that, whether it's somebody else or us, that's, that's our kind of in-kind, do they have plans for security?
They do, um, and we'll be meeting with them again soon, but they usually hire all the police officers.
Police officers, okay, excellent.
So, let me ask about everything else, how does this fit in with the coronavirus thing? Are they, do they, you know?
At this point, they haven't.
They're, they're not gonna serve any corona. Just, just corona-like, this is outside the thirty days, um, so at this point, we're still making preparations.
Right.
Exactly.
Right, and they, they haven't canceled the one in Duluth yet, probably will this is in March, but, um, so Brittany will stay in touch with them for the next couple of days and see what their plans are. But we just want to go ahead and get it, um, see if it'll get approved, just in case they can't afford with it.
Very good, Darren?
I'm sure this goes without saying, but if they could reach out to make some power off duty officers, I think that would go a long way.
Very good. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Boards, authorities, and committees, I know everybody looks forward. Yes, I like that. All right, then city attorney, so we will have one first read on Tuesday, which was the, uh, alcohol ordinance update, and then we have two second reads, which, I think it's just two, yeah. Which is the ordinance amendment, chapter fifty-four of municipal court, and the community redevelopment tax incentive program. We get to mayor and council, look at that.
I have, can I ask one question on the, uh, second read? It's a quick one, it's a really, really good one.
No start.
Um, that's all right, I'm, I'm used to that. There were two ordinances referenced in the recommended motion, but only one in the agenda. Uh, I'm assuming that there's another workload out there, but just wanted to make sure we get clarity on that by Tuesday, if we're ready for approval of one or the other.
Very good, so then, like I said, big star, everybody except Darren, because he just tried to keep us longer. But now, everybody's favorite, citizen comment, you'll be allowed three minutes to come up to the microphone, give your name and address to city clerk. Also, turn your mind, keep it respectful. Nobody? All right, very good, do we have an executive test this evening? We do not? All right, so not a land speed record, but pretty good. But we're out here in an hour and two minutes really, because we started a little late. Thank y'all for being here, we appreciate it, I know you, uh, so brave for the coronavirus to be here.